The Brooklyn City Council to order. Don, can you please call the roll?
Ron Vinckert.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shockey.
Here.
Andy Silver.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tensky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Following the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for our opening by Councilman Grodick.
At pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something, you have to do something. These words were spoken by Representative John Lewis. Mr. Lewis is the last living speaker of the 1963 March on Washington and a cornerstone of the Civil Rights Movement. He recently was diagnosed with stage four pancreatic cancer. In 2018, I had the opportunity and the honor to hear Mr. Lewis speak. As February is Black History Month, I would like to offer my thanks and a moment of silence for Representative Lewis, the thousands of other brave participants in the Civil Rights Movement, and their families, in recognition of their courage and sacrifice to make this country a more inclusive place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Ms. Grodick. This time, we have a swearing-in, so at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor and to our police chief.
Tonight, we, uh, I, the mayor and I have the privilege of swearing in Brian Glandorf into the position of police sergeant in the Brooklyn Police Department. Uh, Brian has been here for about 22 years. He was hired in April of 1998. He has worn many hats over his career. He's been assigned, he was assigned to the Detective Bureau in November of 2002. Uh, he worked on the Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force. Um, when it was very, uh, in his infancy, he helped start it. Uh, he became a master investigator, got a certificate through that. Uh, his career has resulted in many commendations and awards for his outstanding work. I can personally attest to that. He has worked on large RICO cases, homicides, sexual assaults. Uh, he's worked with many other agencies and task force on other, uh, more complex investigations. He has served our department in many, many ways. Uh, some of them are evidence technician. He manages our property room, our evidence room. And going forward, as sergeant, he will continue in his role as a detective and he will lead our detective bureau in their daily activities. Personally, Brian's a dear friend. I was really stoked, if you could say that, when Brian decided he was taking the sergeant's test and wanted to pursue this path. So, uh, congratulations to Brian Glandorf.
Congratulations. Um, I know you're, one of your first order businesses, I was briefed today, was the bank robbery that you were, you and your team were able to solve in less than 48 hours, so congratulations on that.
Thank you, mostly my team.
Mostly your team? Well, that's the first thing you learn as a leader, right? Make sure and give a credit where credits due. Okay, if you can raise your right hand. I, Brian Glandorf.
I, Brian Glandorf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
Constitution and the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the charters and ordinances of the City of Brooklyn.
The charters and ordinances of the City of Brooklyn.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge.
My duties as sergeants in the City of Brooklyn.
My duties as sergeant for the City of Brooklyn.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't want to use my pet.
Okay.
Congratulations, Sergeant. Congratulations. Thank you, Chief, and as always, thanks to all the police officers. They do an excellent job, day in, day out, so thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that very much. And those of you here who are swearing in, you're welcome to stay, but if you don't want to, you're welcome to leave this time. Okay, at this time, we have, uh, some minutes for approval from the meeting dated January 27th, 2020. Are there any comments or questions regarding those minutes?
May be recognized?
Yes.
Um, there's a correction on page, um, it's on page two. Um, the third paragraph, domestic abuse, second line, um, it says, Colleen, Realize, Shapiro. It should be Reali, R-E-A-L-I.
I sent that to Mary Jo, too, so you have the correct spelling.
Yes.
Any other comments? All right, uh, move that we adopt as amended.
Second.
To approve his amended, Ron Vinckert.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Silver.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tensky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Mr. Bloom, could you do me a favor? Would you mind pulling those doors closed back there? I want that to be able to, thank, Mr. Butler, God, never mind. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Uh, just as a note, the Public Safety and Environmental Committee will have a meeting immediately following the council meeting. All are welcome to attend that. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is any safer, good and well for the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. But just remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everybody. John Wagner, 4825 Bentonwood Drive, Brooklyn, Ohio. Just want to give you a latest update on the census. Um, we had a great weekend. We have now 100% completed the goal for this, for the county on the number of applicants that we were charged to find. We were charged to find 8,770. We will pass over 9,000 after today. Recruiting will continue for the next five weeks. There's still a few parts of the city that we have not gotten the necessary number of people, because what we're trying to do is keep, keep people as close to where they live as possible. So we have three major sections that are still behind. Number one, University Circle. I think we can all understand why that is. Is apartment complexes and a lot of businesses and what have you, and, and people generally not in need. Number two, Asia Town, simply because I think there we can have a social economic kind of situation, plus language. And then downtown for the very similar reasons that I discussed at University Circle. So over the next five weeks, everybody that was pretty much involved in the rest of the county will focus in on those three areas. But I think we're one of the first counties in the country to actually complete or get the necessary applicants needed to do the census in the county. So again, I want to thank everybody here. Um, the newsletter was incredible. I must have fielded 15 calls over the last two weeks off of that newsletters from Brooklyn residents. I am still encouraging them to apply. Just because I said we've met our numbers doesn't mean that there still aren't jobs available, depending on the individual's talent and ability to do the job. All right, so what comes next? The next phase of this is where we have a new program this time for the census. It's called MQA, which is Mobile Questionnaire Assistance. And what does that mean? The government loves acronyms. You should know that, right, everybody? Okay, so basically, what it is, we're going to take the folks like myself that were out there helping people to apply, we're going to change their role. Their role is now going to go into the community and make sure that the census is answered, the actual questionnaire is completed. Uh, we know that more than 25% of the population has no access to the Internet. We know that there's a tremendous population that doesn't even have a phone. So it becomes our responsibility now to make sure that we, we find places for them to come and to sit down with trained people to help them answer their questionnaire. It seems like a simple thing, and it is simple, but we need to make it happen. So my guess is, is that the City of Brooklyn will be asked to help supply some of those areas, whether it's the rec center, whether it's the senior center, whether it's the library, whatever it is, you'll, they'll be contacted and asked to help supply space and invite people to come that maybe weren't going to be able to do it on their own. Okay. That program will start around the first of April. I've been asked to sort of, to manage it for the time being. I'll go to Philadelphia for three days, train, and I'll train everybody to do the job, and then, once that's done, they'll find something else for me to do, who knows? But I'll be back here begging for support, no matter what that is. So I'm excited about that. It's the next step. Um, we really are committed in the county to count everybody humanly possible. And again, I just want to thank everybody for their support and pass on the good news. Questions? All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Joe.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Beatty Service Drive. Just here, we, the school has a levy coming up, issue 25, on St. Patrick's Day. Um, we hope you guys get out and vote. It's, it's a renewal levy, no new taxes. It means quite a bit to the school, so we, we'd appreciate any support we can get. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Milante Milkovich, and my address is 4130 Ridge Road, Brook Park. And I want to talk shortly about my experience in the library. And I, uh, in the meantime, I have sent a letter to the mayor. Have you received it?
I have received it, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I was, I had a letter for the director of the library, and I thought it was more convenient to take it to the branch than to send it via USPS and so on and so on. And I went to the circulation desk and handed the letter and said, this is for the director. And the class said, oh, I cannot do it. She's over there. I cannot do it. Just send it over the post, UPS, and post office. So I just put the letter down and said, just send it to her. Goodbye. And it was a very bad experience in the library. I would like to, I'm, I'm sorry, I would like you to communicate with the library about that.
Good job.
Thank you.
The mayor can answer your question, if you have a seat.
So I did talk to the director of the library, and I, just so you know, the library branch is a Kaiga County branch, and so it's in Brooklyn, it's a county branch. I did talk to Tracey Sobel, who's the head of the library, and, um, so she knows about your concern.
All right, but the library is not a part of the municipal, municipality, but it serves, it serves the municipality, so.
And, and beyond.
Right.
So we, we do have a, we are lucky to have a branch in our community, but it's the Kaiga County branch.
I understand that. I'm sorry, I'm not time to argue, but that's a library. I had a letter, I was not impolite, I just.
Yeah, I made sure that she had your concern, though. I went, I sent her an email directly and we talked.
Well, I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We begin this evening with the committee of the whole. We did meet just prior to our council meeting, following the finance meeting, went over the following. Uh, the first was a notification. Uh, we received $1,000 once again from Tap Packaging, and this time for the fire department. You recall at the last meeting, they gave $1,000 for the police department for shop, with a cop program. Uh, this $1,000 for the fire department will be used to purchase smoke detectors and other fire safety educational materials. Uh, council was also notified of a request for a bid approval, and this is for the extension of American Road, its phase two. Uh, there were six contractors that did return this bid. Uh, the lowest and best bid is Trymore Corporation. For $333,333, this is approximately 8% under the estimate, and so we will be voting to award that bid to Trymore Corporation this evening. Ordinance 2020-1 is up for a third degree of adoption. This is promoting clean and healthy parks by enacting section 521.101 of the Codified North City of Brooklyn. Uh, this will outlaw any type of smoking in the parks, any use of, uh, any tobacco product, as well as any vaping device in a marijuana. Uh, will all be outlawed in all city parks if this goes through tonight. Ordinance 2020-4, this establishes the position of part-time recreation supervisor for, um, facilities and programs, and this will be on the same level as currently as the recreation supervisor for the aquatics position, and this will be, uh, will take the place of the assistant pool manager that we have over there now. Ordinance 2020-6, uh, this is on first reading, but we hope to pass by suspension of the rules. Uh, this is authorizing the action necessary to accept a NOPAC 2020 Energize Community Grant. Uh, this was on our agenda last time as a notification, uh, but the grant did require legislation, that's what this is, and this will be $34,914 that we look, we will receive from NOPAC, uh, once this ordinance is adopted. And these grant funds will help offset the cost of the new HVAC system that we already have budgeted for, for the fire station for 2020. Ordinance 2020-7, amending various sections of property maintenance and rental licensing code to provide for the regulation of transient rentals. Uh, this has to do with short-term rentals of, i.e., Airbnb, uh, and different companies like that. This will be part of our public safety meeting that will follow our council meeting, we'll discuss this. Then ordinance 2020-8, this also, uh, authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation relating to Safe Routes to School Project. Uh, this project costs $63,198.90, and the entire project is eligible to receive funds for this. And this will be to enhance the crosswalk in front of the school on bid off-road for new signage, uh, better, um, paint jobs on the, um, sidewalks and crosswalks there. Uh, Mrs. Pucci serves on the Safe Routes to School Commission, so I'm sure she'll talk more about this when she gives her report. Ordinance 2020-9, uh, this is an updated capital improvement plan for 2020. Uh, we want to, um, spend an additional $49,000 in our capital budget this year, and that's to do as a city center site diligence, engineering, feasibility study. And that's to take boring samples in all city property, both here and across the street, to see whether it's feasible or not to build on and what part portions are, uh, for a potential future police station and, um, city hall. And we will also expand upon the 2015 study that was done for our police station to find out the needs for a potential police station, as well as combine that with city hall. Uh, we did a very extensive study back in 2015, so we're not going to start over on that, we're just going to build off of that, make some changes to it, and then hopefully be able to put together a plan, uh, for a new city hall and a new, uh, police station. And that concludes, uh, what we went over in the committee of the whole at this time. We'll move on to Recreation Board. Councilman Tensky.
Thank you. City of Brooklyn Community Summer Camp 2020. Ages 5 to 12 will be held at Brooklyn Rec Center in St. Thomas More, Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, beginning June 8th through August 14th. No camp week of June 29th through July 3rd. Field trip locations to be determined. Costs are included in the registration fee. Camper fees, $120 weekly, $90 for second, third child. Forecare, 7:00 AM, $5 daily fee. Aftercare, 5:00 PM, $5 daily fee. All campers are required to bring the non-perishable lunch and drink, bathing suit, towel, tennis shoes daily. A snack will be provided daily. Field trips will be on Fridays each week. Swimming and skating lessons will be also available throughout the summer for registered campers. Registration begins February 15th. To register, please go online at www.brc activityreg.com, or in person at the rec center. A valid email address is required. Emergency medical forms, swim permission forms must be submitted prior to the first day of camp. Brooklyn Recreation Spring Volleyball League is for grades 3 to 4 co-ed and grades 5 to 6 co-ed. Residents $60, non-residents $65. Registration February 1st through March 1st. Practices begin the week of March 11th. Games begin on March 28th and will be played on Saturdays. Please join us for free admission clinic on Saturday, February 22nd, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. At the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse, hosted by Brooklyn High School and the middle school coaches. Registration for this event required by February 15th. Volunteer coaches needed. If anyone is interested, please let us know at the time of registration. Registration online at www.brcactivityreg.com. Brooklyn Recreation Spring Soccer Registration has begun and will run through March 1st. SRSL Soccer is for ages 9 to 12, with games beginning early April. Mini Cane Soccer, ages 3 to 8, begins on April 4th through May 23rd, with games played on Saturdays. Mini Canes in House Instructional Leagues will play all games and practices at Brooklyn Fields. Contact the rec center at RECINFO@brooklynohio.gov. For more information on any of these programs, contact the rec center at 216-351-5334. Rec center will be closed Monday, March, Monday, February 17th, in honor of President's Day. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 19th, in the rec center meeting room at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tensky. Next up is Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shockey.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February 19th, at 6 o'clock at the Brooklyn Acres. We will have guest speaker, Megan, from the Domestic Abuse and Child Advocacy, Advocacy Center. Also to note, February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. The commission is still working on arranging an event with the Brooklyn Key Club students in recognition of this. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Kolsar.
Thank you, Mr. Vinckert. The February Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, uh, for the 20th, has been canceled. No applications were received. Next scheduled meeting will be March 19th. That completes my report.
And next up is our Planning Commission, brief announcement from Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
The February 6th meeting was also canceled. Both related, uh, agenda items were deferred at the request of the applicant. The next meeting is scheduled for March 5th, 2020, 6:00 PM, in the City Council chambers, or City Council Conference Room. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up, Economic Development, Councilman Silver.
Thank you. The Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation held its annual meeting on Monday, February 4th, 2020, at 7:45 AM in the City Hall Conference Room at 7:45. Minutes of the meetings of January 14th and February 4th, 2019, were read and approved. Trustees, Ms. Deborah Tomusko and Mrs. Kathleen Pucci, were nominated and re-elected to new three-year terms. The officers are Katie Gallagher, Mayor, as Chair, Mr. John Martinez, Treasurer, Mrs. Kathleen Pucci as Secretary, Mr. Deborah Tomusko as a member, and myself as a member. Assets of the Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation at December 31st, 2019, consist of $103,000 for land ownership at assessed value. This is the property that's southeast corner of Ridge in Memphis. Since there was no other business, the meeting was adjourned. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilman Mary Bell Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Vinckert. Brooklyn City Schools will hold a finance forum at 6:30 PM, Wednesday, February 12th, in the high school auditorium, as part of efforts to pass issue 25. The emergency operating renewal levy on the March 17th ballot. More such forums are planned for later dates. The levy will generate $2.1 million per year and continue to cost $227 annually for every $100,000 home evaluation. The next school board meeting is February 18th, in the media room at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our Fair Housing Representative, Councilman Ryan Shockey.
The Fair Housing Review Board will be meeting at 5:30 PM on Monday, February 24th, to discuss Brooklyn's fair housing ordinance and if any updates need to be made. And that ends the report.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, following tonight's council meeting, we'll have a Public Safety and Environmental Committee meeting, and, uh, we're going to discuss ordinance 2020-7, that's on your agenda this evening, that's for the short-term rentals in Brooklyn, as well as the potential for building a dog park in the City of Brooklyn. Um, all are welcome to stay and attend following tonight's council meeting. With that, we'll move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Councilwoman Ryan Shockey.
Everyone knows what day St. Patrick's Day is on, but did you know that the Ohio primary election falls on the same day this year? It's on March 17th. You have until next week, Tuesday, February 18th, to register or update your voter registration to take part in this election day. For high school students and parents of high school students, it is important to know that if you will be 18 on or before the general election, which falls on November 3rd this year, they can vote in the primary election for candidates that will also be on the general ballot. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. As you heard from Mr. Slattery and Mrs. Bell Beer, there is a school levy coming up on March 17th. If you can, please support it. It is a renewal, it's not a request for new money. Uh, the progress has been made at the schools and is still being made, and we need to continue, and so please support the levy. Uh, you'll hear about a month from now, there is the typical annual high school musical, Newsies, this year. Showtimes are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, March 12, 13, and 14 at 7:00 PM. There's an afternoon show at Saturday at 2:00 PM. Brooklyn Youth High School is holding a fundraiser at Chipoli, uh, next Fri, uh, next Tuesday, February 18th, from 5 to 9:00 PM. All you have to do is order your food and mention sharks when you check out. On February 24th, um, the mayor, the finance director, and myself will be meeting with representatives from First Energy and from Mr. Kerry Wilson. He's the managing director of Business Solutions for Real Term Energy. Real Term Energy is a company that's based out of Canada with an office in Annapolis, Maryland. I came across Real Term Energy first approximately, approximately two years ago at a seminar that was sponsored by the Ohio Municipal League down in Akron. Um, Real Term Energy is a North American leader in providing efficient, energy-efficient turnkey LED street lighting conversions for cities with over 200 municipalities. They have selected them since their founding in 2013. Their government relations and community solutions department assists with community outreach, procurement, and policies, and work to ensure projects surpass each of the client's goals. We'll be dealing with Mr. Kerry Wilson. He's a founding partner of Real Term Energy, who's responsible for the execution of their corporate strategy and brings to their team more than 25 years of investment banking, public-private partnership, infrastructure development, project financing, commercial brokerage experience. Kerry develops and maintains the highest standards in relationships with their municipal client and power firms. Kerry's impact was recently acknowledged by an invitation to the speak at World Bank in Washington, DC, about Real Term Energy's highly successful work with LAS in developing and delivering the firm's joint procurement model throughout Ontario, Canada. Real Terms Energy partnership and the joint procurement model developed with LAS and Association of Municipalities of Ontario has been recognized by the World Bank as being the most efficient and successful delivery models in the world. Uh, LA, Real Term Energy has primarily worked within the provinces of Canada, Ontario. They've also worked over in the western provinces. They've worked on the east coast in the United States, and they're looking to expand within here, so we'll have discussions with them. Mr. Wilson will talk to the council at home meeting, and he'll also be here at the general council meeting on the 24th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Brian Glandorf on his promotion, and I wish him a very long and healthy career in his new position. Um, I, I'm going to put a plug in for issue 25 also. Um, I'm not able to attend the upcoming school finance committee meeting this Wednesday because I have to work, so I did go in last week and I met with Dr. Gleikoff. Um, it is a renewal, as everyone has said. It does, uh, bring in $2.1 million, so it's an integral part of the school's budget. Uh, please plan on attending one of the finance forums, the one up and coming this Wednesday. And then there's another one on March They have selected them since their founding in 2013. Their government relations and community solutions department assists with community outreach, procurement, and policies, and work to ensure projects surpass each of the client's goals. We'll be dealing with Mr. Kerry Wilson. He's the founding partner of Real Term Energy, who's responsible for the execution of their corporate strategy and brings to their team more than 25 years of investment banking, public-private partnership, infrastructure development, project finance, and commercial brokerage experience. Kerry develops and maintains the highest standards in relationships with their municipal client and power firms. Kerry's impact was recently acknowledged by an invitation to the speak in World Bank in Washington, D.C. about Real Term Energy's highly successful work with LAS in developing and delivering the firm's joint procurement model throughout Ontario, Canada. Real Terms Energy partnership and the joint procurement model developed with LAS and Association of Municipalities of Ontario has been recognized by the World Bank as being the most efficient and successful delivery models in the world. Real Term Energy has primarily worked within the provinces of Canada, Ontario. They've also worked over in the western provinces. They've worked on the east coast in the United States, and they're looking to expand within here, so we'll have discussions with them. Mr. Wilson will talk to the council at home meeting, and he'll also be here at the general council meeting on the 24th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Brian Glendorf on his promotion, and I wish him a very long and healthy career in his new position. I'm going to put a plug in for Issue 25 also. I'm not able to attend the upcoming School Finance Committee meeting this Wednesday because I have to work, so I did go in last week and I met with Dr. Gleikoff. It is a renewal, as everyone has said. It does bring in $2.1 million, so it's an integral part of the school's budget. Please plan on attending one of the finance forums, the one up and coming this Wednesday. And then there's another one on March 4th in the Brooklyn Acres in their admin building. Early voting does begin on February 19th, and you can early vote either by mail or in person. As Ms. Ryan Shaki mentioned, the primary is on St. Patrick's Day, so there is concern about that possibly impacting the turnout for the election. So if you think it's going to be an issue, I would definitely encourage you to vote early, either in person or by mail. Mr. Van Kirk asked me to mention the legislation on what's covered for the Safe Routes to School. This is ordinance 2000...I'm sorry, 2020-8. This was the infrastructure grant that we received, and basically there'll be an enhanced crosswalk in front of the school, including crossing beacons, and then there'll be signage, striping, and pavement markings on school property. There are issues with how cars are traveling within the school campus that are impacting the student's safety, so we are hoping that by adding some clear signage, markings on the pavement, and different striping on school property, that this will assist and help with keeping our students safe. And then there's also a mobile radar unit that we will be able to use not only around the schools, but also we will be able to deploy that to other areas of the city. And I believe that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bellbeer.
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate Mr. Brian Glendorf on making sergeant. I hope he continues to have a wonderful career here in Brooklyn, and I wish him only happiness and safety, and may God bless him. I'd also like to thank Mr. John Wagner. You get up here every single week, and you push that census, and I can only appreciate your passion for it. You make me want to put my tennis shoes on and help you and go door-to-door if I wasn't working so much. I might be able to help a little bit, but I thank you for your passion in pushing that. Recently, there's been a lot of talk regarding the use of the plastic bags by grocery stores and others. Cuyahoga County's plastic bag ban took effect January 1st, but will not be enforced until July 1st, giving stores more time to make the transition. There are numerous exceptions, but generally the law is aimed at those flimsy plastic bags, primarily from the grocery stores. More than 319 million plastic bags become waste each year in Cuyahoga County, much of them taking up valuable space in landfills, and many just becoming trash in our neighborhoods. The average time a plastic bag is used is 12 minutes, but can take up to 1,000 years to decompose. But if the future holds...but if the future holds for all of us the reusing of shopping bags, an important problem arises, and that is germs. Research shows that dirty reusable grocery bags can spread germs. A study going back to 2011 out of the University of Arizona found bacteria in 99% of bags tested. Actually, a half-carried coliform bacteria and 8% carried E. coli, both indicating fecal contamination. So since our futures will involve using reusable bags, we should be aware of steps to keep from getting sick. There are safety tips from many organizations, including Good Housekeeping and Ohio State University regarding these bags. Many are common sense. Some tips are wash bags after using, especially those used for meat, produce, dairy, and pre-cooked food. Using a disinfectant wipe to quickly clean a bag's interior isn't effective enough in killing the germs. The disinfectant wipe would need to be in contact with the bag's surface for a full two minutes to eliminate the bacteria. Label bags for meat, produce, dairy, canned goods, and so on to cut down on cross-contamination. Putting produce, dairy, and meat in the same bag can be harmful. Keep bags used for other things like books, sports gear, and other non-food items separate from food bags. Make sure bags are dry before storing them. Canvas and cotton bags can be machine washed and washed or line-dried. Insulated shopping bags can be hand-washed in warm water and air-dried. It sounds like a lot of bother, and I'm sure many will adhere to these tips, but once you get used to doing it, it can prevent you and your family from getting sick in the future. Just recently, I was driving, I'm not sure if it was...it was on the Cleveland area, and a fellow was on a little scooter, and he was in main street traffic, and he was turning left onto more traffic. So I have a couple questions, and I'm hoping Chief Melkey can help me with it. You know, I don't know what are some of the laws for cars, bicycles, and scooters. Are cars allowed to go in the bicycle lanes on the streets? That's one question. Are bicycles allowed to go in the main street traffic? What are some of the rules of bicycles? Are they different for children and adults, like sidewalks and streets? And is Cleveland different rules than our city? And what about the scooters? Are they treated as bicycles or cars? I see them on streets and I see them on sidewalks. So if you could shed some light...I don't know if you remember all those questions, but I could say some of them. But maybe you could shed some light to that.
Generally, scooters and bicycles, they are allowed on the streets, but they have to...like, cars aren't supposed to be using the bicycle lane, but there are times that traffic making a right-hand turn, per se, that you're allowed.
But is a scooter allowed in the main street traffic? Is he allowed to be ahead of me when I'm turning left and he's turning left?
If he...he's got to give you the right to pass?
Yeah.
Like a bicycle would? But if he's making a left, then he should treat it like a bicycle would, changing lanes and such, and then getting to the right as fast as possible.
Okay. And what about...what about actually riding on the sidewalk? Now, I'm visualizing I'm going to bring my bike out this spring, but I would like to ride on the sidewalk. Am I allowed to?
You're allowed.
Okay. I am. It's not necessary for me to ride in the street. I can go on the...okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Tansky.
Thank you, good evening. I'd also like to congratulate Brian Glendorf on his new position. It's been another great year for Silver Sneakers. Here are the numbers for 2019. January made $3,774. February, $3,843. March, $3,059. April, $3,266. May, $3,441. June, $3,973. July, $3,596. August, $3,574. September, $3,789. October, $3,959. November, $3,878. December, $3,789. A total of $43,944. As you can see, Silver Sneakers brought in revenue over $3,000 each month. Since being enacted in 2012, Silver Sneakers has also brought more than $250,000 through 2019. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Grodick.
Thank you. I also would like to congratulate Sergeant Glendorf, and I also think it's quite a testament to his character that so many officers and so many family members were here for really a very short swearing-in. It was great to see so many people here. I also would like to thank Tap Packaging for another donation to our city. It's much needed and much appreciated. And lastly, I would like to thank the directors. This is the first time I received their annual reports, and as somebody who has a lot to learn about our community, it was very beneficial for me to be able to read through them and see what all was going on in 2019 while I wasn't looking. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I've been in contact recently with our state representative, Ryan Sweeney, several times in recent weeks. I actually spoke at length with her on the phone today. And she's been working on a new piece of legislation dealing specifically with the way that the state is funding Brooklyn City schools. We've discussed this numerous times in the past. This issue is the major cause for Brooklyn schools' funding issue. House Bill 5, which is the latest version of the Cut Patterson Bill, is still working its way through the House, but unfortunately, bills that are similar to this have been stranded and stopped for various reasons. Ms. Sweeney actually will be introducing this legislation tomorrow, and I actually have a copy of our legislation right here. And this bill is not a fix for the school funding issue, but it does offer some reprieve and brings to light, obviously, communities like ours that are so negatively affected by the current funding. And I asked her to send me some examples of...if you go and you look at the formula, you can look at it online, the formula is unbelievably complicated, and I find it hard to believe that anyone understands how it works. And even Ms. Sweeney said there are very few that actually know how it works. And...but just to give you an example, these numbers are a bit dated, but it does bring to light where we are. This is from...this is the state aid cap per pupil, and this is from fiscal year 2016. For Brooklyn, we receive $650 per student, and the poverty rate in Brooklyn is at 51% with our median income of $29,416. That doesn't really mean anything unless you have something to compare it to. So let's compare it to, say, Avon. All right, I just mentioned that Brooklyn receives $650 per pupil. Avon receives $1,039 per pupil. Our poverty rate is 51%, theirs is 10%. Our median household income is $29,416, theirs is $58,149. So their poverty rate is five times less than ours, their median income is double ours, and yet they're receiving almost double in the amount of funding per pupil for the cap rate by the state. Another example is Orange City. Orange City receives $705, $55 more per student. Their poverty rate's at 13%, and their median household income is at $71,000. That's about $45,000 more than what we receive here in Brooklyn. And the reason for this is the formula that is currently in the law in the State House. And the Cut Patterson Bill has been in the news. It's had different versions. I'm speaking with Ms. Sweeney today. It had 66 cosponsors at the very beginning, and so I asked her, I'm like, well, 66, that's 2/3 of the 99 representatives that we have. Why can't we get a vote? And her reasoning, it makes sense, is that, you know, the bill has changed so many times, many of the people that were cosponsors don't even really know what's in it yet, and so that the current version of it. So it's a very arduous process. And so Ms. Sweeney's bill, if it passes, again, it would not correct the funding formula area, but it would guarantee that school districts receive as much per state aid per pupil as the statewide per pupil amount for chartered non-public schools. And that amount is $1,371 per student. So to be eligible for this payment, a school district's median income must be below the statewide median. And so in doing research, there are actually three cities our school districts would benefit. Brooklyn is one of them. The other two are Ottawa County, Danbury, and Putnam Bay. And for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, if this would go into effect, it will be $522,000 per year. So in those two years, it'd be over a million dollars of funding that would be corrected through this bill. Now, it's not going to go into effect for those two years. It wouldn't go into effect until 2022. They don't have the numbers for 2022, but you can see this is an important piece of legislation. And again, she's supposed to drop this bill tomorrow in the assembly there in Columbus. Once the bill is dropped in the assembly, it will then go to committee, and at least one hearing will be set up. When that hearing is set up, I intend to travel to Columbus to speak to this, the way that the Brooklyn schools are being funded, and I would encourage other residents as well to come attend this, to accompany me to the State House, have your voice heard regarding this issue. Representative Sweeney is working very hard on this issue. She's been working on it pretty much since she took office last year, but it's going to take our communities speaking out. You know, they say that the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and phone calls to representatives go a long, long way. And so I'm planning on keeping residents posted about when these hearings will take place, and, you know, we can complain and cry about the way the school funding is done. It is...I hate to use the word unfair, because that word is used so much in society today, but really the funding, the system is not fair, the way that it's set up, and communities like Brooklyn have fallen through the cracks. I was speaking with Mrs. Sweeney's assistant today, and her office is real close to Representative Patterson's office, who's part of the Patterson Cut Bill, and he even acknowledges that Brooklyn is one of the largest effects, negative effects, of the current situation. And so Mrs. Sweeney is working on this, and Ms. Sweeney, I should say, is working on this, and so I'll keep residents posted. But I would encourage you to do your own research on this and find out what we can do to make this change, but I'll keep residents apprised to this. One thing I did want to point out since about the census is that in 2010, approximately 73% of the Cuyahoga County residents were counted in 2010. According to some research that Mr. Reguz gave us in the finance meeting, that we're the second worst in the country. The only one worse than us is Cook County, which is where Chicago is located. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. If the entire county had a county full of Johns working all over the place like that, we would do much better, but hopefully we can do better for this time around. It goes a lot to how it's funded, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reguz, but I believe you said for every resident not counted, it's $1,800 in funding that the county loses as a result of that. 27% of the county not counted, times $1,800 per person, you can do the math on that. Right, the state and the counties losing out on a lot of funds that are supposed to be headed our way because people are not counted. So it is important to make sure that those censuses are completed. In regards to the plastic bag ban, thank you, Mrs. Bellbeer, regarding that, but in Brooklyn, we're exempt from it. All right, so Brooklyn retailers are exempted from the county plastic bag ban, and so Brooklyn retailers do not have to worry about that if they so choose. All right, at this time, we'll now turn it over to the mayor. Mary Gallagher.
Thank you. I have two small items. I mentioned this during the committee as a whole, but I sat down with the representatives from university hospitals. They are moving forward on their build-out right here on Ridge Road in between Hammond and Waffle. You see a lot of construction going on. They're going to have a primary care office. They were supposed to have it open by the end of last year, but now they are hoping for early spring, so you'll see some movement and a new business in that building. And the last thing I have is I will be having a coffee with the mayor on the 21st at 9:00 a.m. at the senior center. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, Mayor Bellbeer, now move on with the reports of directors. Begin this evening with our finance director, Mr. Reguz.
Good evening, City Council. Just two brief updates. As we discussed in the finance committee meeting, our 2019 financial audit has started this past Monday, a week ago from today. So as we go along, I will brief council on the updates and the recommendations from our auditors, and as always, the anticipated completion date is by June 30th. And lastly, per our credit card policy, I want to notify City Council that we did receive a rebate in the amount of $2,087.06 for our credit card program during 2019. The rebate was received from KeyBank. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our service director, Mr. Birba.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The city has a new program for all active military and veterans. It is called the Hometown Military Banner Program. The program is for current residents and residents that did live in the city growing up. The banner is 30 by 60. It will feature a picture of the hometown hero, branch of service, and name of the sponsor. The banners will be displayed along Corporal Night Commons and Veteran Memorial Park. The banners will be displayed from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. The cost of the banner is $130. For more information, please check our website, or you can call me directly at 216-635-4219. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Birba. Now move on with the legislation this evening. The first item is a notification from Tap Packaging from the fire department for one...a donation for $1,000. And again, this will be used for purchase of smoke detectors and other fire safety educational materials, so once again, I want to thank Tap Packaging for that generous donation. Next is a bid approval, a request for American Roadway South Extension. And again, as I mentioned in the committee of the whole report, there were six companies that turned in bids. Trymore Corporation was the lowest and best bid at an amount of $333,333, and this is 7.9% under the estimate. Any comments or questions regarding that?
Move to award the bid to Trymore for $333,333. To award the bid, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Sullards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Under old business this evening, ordinance 2020-1, up for third reading and adoption, promoting clean and healthy parks by enacting Section 521.101 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances, nonsmoking in parks. Any comments or questions? Make a motion that we adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Sullards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-4, up for third reading and adoption, establishing the position of part-time recreation supervisor for facilities and programs. Any comments or questions? Make a motion that we adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Sullards? Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Under new business this evening, Ordinance 2020-6, we hope to pass by suspension of the rules this evening, authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2020 Energize Community Grant. The grant amount is $34,914 and will be applied to the new HVAC system for the fire station. Any comments or questions?
Introduce, may I suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sullhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sullhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Thank you.
On first reading this evening is Ordinance 2020-7, amending various sections of property maintenance and rental licensing code to provide for the regulation of transient rentals. Ordinance 2020-8 is on first reading, but we hope to pass by suspension of the rules, authorizing the Mayor to enter an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation relating to the Safe Routes to School project, and this is the project that Mrs. Pucci explained in her report. Any comments or questions?
Introduce, may I suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.